me when we are live and then we will go.
We are live. Sorry, my chat was disabled.
Yeah, I got to figure out why that happens, but thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, it's 7:02. I will open the Lunenburg Select Board meeting of Tuesday, June 8, 2021. In accordance with the requirement of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and on YouTube Live, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. For those who wish to participate in tonight's meeting and have a smartphone, a tablet, or a computer, we are doing this using the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate in tonight's meeting, do not have access to one of those smart devices, you can participate by phone by dialing 1-888-475-4499. Once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like, if you're using the Zoom application on a smart device, please acquaint yourself with the raise your hand feature, which is on reactions on some, on most, at least PC and Mac applications on cell phones, it could vary. On the phone, if you want to wish to raise your hand, you can dial *9. The host, that being me, will see people's hands raised and will call on you at the appropriate time. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed in the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Because this is remote, I will do a roll call, roll of the members. Mr. Marino.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
I am here.
Mr. Franco.
I am here.
And Tom Alonso, chair is here. Mr. Dwyer is not present tonight. He is away. We do have the pledge on tonight, so we don't have a designated pledge sayer. If somebody, Mr. Marino, would you lead the pledge since you're the one who has a flag in your background?
Certainly. Pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marino.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have any public comment from the board this evening? I do have one announcement. I want to congratulate all Lunenburg High School class of 2021. The ceremony was on Saturday morning. I was able to catch it live streaming on Facebook, thanks to PAC, who is covering tonight's and most of our meetings. And I want to congratulate all the students and their families. It was certainly a very interesting last two years of graduation for those students last year in 2020 and this year. But I congratulate them, and I guess, you know, I guess you've been hardened, you've been, you know, tested, if I could do that. So I wish you all the best of luck in your next endeavors as you enter in a new phase of your life. Any public comment from the public this evening? Okay, seeing nobody raise their hand, we will go on to announcements. I have no announcements other than the one I just made. Madam Town Manager, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
Okay. So we have two appointments. Appointment number one, 7:05, weekday entertainment license for Smokestack Roasters LLC, 39 Mass Ave. We received an email, a late-breaking email, probably around 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock this afternoon, that they are rescinding that license. They're unable to attend, and they want to rethink their strategy for this particular license. So that appointment is hereby canceled. When they need to bring this up again, they will contact the Selectment's office or the Town Manager's office and get on the agenda. 7:15, we have the open presentation, so let's skip that for a second because we're eight minutes early, and let's see if we can get one or both of these in. So we have the Bylaw Review Committee, Mary Foyle of 985 Flat Hill Road. I am going to ask Ms. Foyle to unmute. These are Select Board appointments. So, Ms. Foyle, if you would introduce yourself and a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on the Bylaw Review Committee.
Good evening. I'm Mary Foyle at 985 Flat Hill Road. I've lived in town 11 years now. Yes, 11 years now, and I've been a high school teacher at Lunenburg High School for 19 years. In those roles, I teach actually our civics class and I'm running our civics class program. And I also am an English teacher, so I believe words matter, which I think falls into the bylaws nicely. I did serve as our union president for almost a decade where we went through quite a few bylaw reviews without having done that before. I serve on the Mass Teachers Association, on the Board of Directors, where people live and breathe bylaws. I think I'm a pretty big bylaw dork, but they put me to shame. They haven't known, and it's a, you know, this giant book. So it's just something I really enjoy doing. And it, to me, it's a nice step into some town government without taking on the massive stuff of the time that you all are taking on in your roles.
Well, if you thought that you were a bylaw, I won't use your word, I'll say aficionado, and they put you to shame. Well, this is a, this is a way to just, you know, sharpen those teeth, right? This is it. I appreciate you coming forward. I mean, it sounds like you have a perfect background for this, given what you just said, especially civics, civics teacher and, and English as well. So I too agree that words, this is a good time to use words accurately and review that people are using them the way they're meant. How did you hear about the committee, if I may ask? We like to know what channels work, so.
Oh, yeah. So because I love bylaws and things, I actually thought about being on the Charter Review Committee but couldn't make it work in that way. So it's always been in my mind. I was at town meeting. I'll admit, I actually multitasked town meeting. I was at the MTA virtually, as I said, our town meeting physically. And actually, I'm good friends with Nancy Gray, and I leaned back to her, and I was like, are you doing that? And then she sent me an email later, and she's like, oh, I'm on the committee. Are you still interested? And I said, okay. So it's word of mouth. What they teach at the union school is if you ask someone, if you get someone to ask someone face to face, it's much harder for them to say no. So her, her answer to me was like, oh, yeah, all right, I'll do it.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad that it worked this time. I will open it up to the board members if they have any questions of Ms. Foyle.
Thanks, Mary Foyle, for your interest in the Bylaw Review Committee. As Tom said, I think you're a great candidate for that job. I know you'll do a good job. It's good to see you, and thanks again for volunteering.
Anybody, any other board members have any questions?
No, no questions, but it's good to see you again, Ms. Foyle. And I know that I worked with a couple of your students a few years ago, and you and I had the opportunity to meet some years back. So it's exciting to see that you're looking to do this, so.
I will say that your predecessor who did civics, I was involved with many talks with, that she put together with the students. And if ever you want anybody, I'm sure anybody on the board, well, I don't want to offer for everybody. I would certainly be happy to talk to your, your classes. I think that people being educated in civics is a very important part. I'm sure you think so too, since you teach it. But anytime you would need that or want that.
Thank you. I have actually big plans moving forward. The pandemic took a hit to a lot of my plans, but Ms. Lemieux has actually visited my classes. Has been doing this for, in some way, for five years. And so Ms. Lemieux has come to a number of my classes to talk to my students.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, so I don't see any other, obviously, all of us, thank you for throwing your proverbial hat in the ring. Thank you for being interested in this. And I would entertain a motion from one of the members regarding Ms. Foyle's application to be on the Bylaw Review Committee.
I would move to appoint Ms. Foyle to the Bylaw Review Committee.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's say that was a tie for a second. So let's see how Elaine puts that in the minutes.
I think, I think I just edged him out.
Can't lobby. You can't lobby for a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Mr. Franco.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
And an eye for myself. Congratulations. Make an appointment to see the town clerk to be sworn in. And then I guess, I don't know that they've met yet. Who is calling the first meeting, Madam Town Manager?
I think they were waiting for the composition. I know, so Steve Archibald and Nancy Gray are the two other people.
Will the town clerk call the first meeting?
Probably.
So, yep. All you have to do is get sworn in, and you're all set.
Great.
And of course, download, download the latest copy of the bylaws to get a head start, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
And, all right, let's do the TCP Building Design Committee Member-at-Large, Christina Masidis. I'm going to hope that I said that near to correct, but I'm sure Christina will tell me.
You did say it correctly.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so you just heard how this works, I'm sure. So I will let you introduce yourself and about why you want to, what your background is and why you want to serve on the TC Building Design Committee.
My name's Christina Masidis. I moved to Lunenburg in 2016. Previous to COVID, I was a system support engineer, and part of my role was working on different, eight different sites between the US and Canada, where I'd work on office expansions, closure, and redesign, as well as like day-to-day activities and service level agreements and end-user agreements. But I really enjoyed that part of the role. So I wanted to help out, and I have two young kids, a five-month-old and an almost two-year-old. So obviously, what happens to the town buildings are really important in that aspect as well.
Okay. I will ask one question. How much have you, how closely thus far have you followed the work that that committee has done to date?
I've looked over the documents, and I've gone to one meeting so far.
Okay. I will open up the floor to board members who have questions. Mr. Franco.
Comment and a question. Now, thank you for stepping up. And also, I like your background as being applicable to the position. I just have to ask you, just because there is some controversy surrounding this, I just want to ask that you have no predisposition either way on whether that building becomes a combined-use building for municipal functions, for, in other words, that you will fairly and impartially evaluate and contribute to the current mission of that committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Succinct is always good. I had the opportunity to meet with Christina, and we had a rather lengthy conversation. And she also attended the last TCP Design Committee meeting. I think she's very well qualified to join the board. I think she's going to bring a breadth of experience and perspective that will be very helpful as we move to this next phase of this process.
Excellent. Mr. Marino, any questions, comments?
No, just, again, thank you for your interest in this committee. Super important. Succinct is a good word to apply to the, to whatever end it will, it will bring us. So good luck, and thank you again.
Yeah, I will say that when we get these committees that have, that have large membership and have, and require, you know, diverse backgrounds of people, it really does, as, as some of the previous members, board members said, it really is important that people have bring different backgrounds, different perspectives. So, you know, we have engineers on there, we have builders, but we want people who are, again, like this position says, this is a member-at-large, who is looking at it from a totally different perspective than how it can be done, or what size. I mean, it's a totally different viewpoint. And I think that's an equally valid viewpoint that covers probably a large section of the citizenry of Lunenburg. So I appreciate you stepping forward and getting right into it with the new charge. I'm sure it'll be a chock-full agenda as we try to continue our exploration of what to do with buildings in town. So I'm sure there'll be lively debates at your meetings. If no one else has any questions, I would entertain a motion with the application of Ms. Masidis at the TCP Building Design Committee.
I, I move to appoint Christina Masidis to the TCP Design Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Franco.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
And an eye for myself. Congratulations. And again, make an appointment to see the town clerk to be sworn in and find out from Mr. Roy, the chair of that committee, when their next meeting is. And good luck on your mission there.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, 7:15. A presentation from the Open Space Chair, Brandon Kibbie, who has joined, and I have to assert, there he is, right there. Okay, I'm going to ask him to mute. He's gonna... Mr. Kibbie, good after, good evening, I should say.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody.
Good to see you. Starting next week, we'll see people in person, I guess.
Yeah, I understand. That's true. We'll have a Open Space Committee meeting in person next week, our first in a very long time, so.
You get to meet new friends again.
That's right.
You got to meet them again. I'm going to make you the host, because I understand you have a presentation.
Sure.
Make you host with the express condition that you give it back to me when you're done?
You got it.
All right.
Terrific. And I will, I will burn through this relatively quickly. My, you should have received a copy of this in your, your packet as well. But mostly just wanted to sort of set the stage for the conversation and let you know what we were thinking. And, and let me preface this with a little bit of an introduction. You know, the Open Space Committee continues to work on various goals and objectives that we laid out in our Open Space Plan that was approved a couple years ago for, for the next, I guess we've got five more years, I think, on that existing plan. And one of the things that we are, if I'm, excuse me, if I'm host, does that mean I have to admit people into the...
Yes.
The doorbell just rang.
All the duties are responsible.
Okay. So, so one of the objectives we had, goals and our goals and objectives, was to make sure that we're using the existing resources that we have in town to the best of our ability. You know, the town is blessed, really, to have a great deal of open space and recreation resources available to it. So how can we improve upon those, use those resources to the best of, to their highest and best use, to provide adequate open space and recreation resources to the, to the townspeople? So most people know that, you know, we have existing recreation areas in town, you know, Marshall Park, Wallace Park, places like that. We have existing open space conservation lands in town, Robbs Hill, the Lane property, Laurel Bank, a number of different resources like that. But what most people don't realize is that the town also owns a whole host of other properties scattered all over the town that are, quote, generally municipally owned. So their, their parcels, a lot of them came via, via tax title process. So they're little pieces of low-value land that are kind of either small to be developed, or, or kind of all over the yard in terms of, of their value to the town. But there are also a whole host of other parcels that were acquired for one reason or another that are sitting there vacant. And there's a number of parcels that were acquired for one use and then were deemed not suitable for that use, and then essentially surplus, which is like one of the parcels we'll discuss tonight. So the Open Space Committee is, has observed that there are a number of these resources that may serve either conservation benefits or recreation benefits. And some of them are quite obvious. You know, we acted on a couple of them a couple of special town meetings ago, little pieces that are directly adjoin existing conservation lands that are landlocked, that have no other real potential utility that makes sense just to be absorbed by the adjoining conservation area. We transferred a couple of those at special town meeting to the Care and Control of the Conservation Commission. Others are, you know, obvious candidates for such designation. And then there's a whole host of others that exist somewhere in the middle. So a couple of the parcels, two of which we will talk tonight, we have long kind of talked about in the, in the Open Space Committee as, geez, this is something we should, you know, look at a little bit more closely. And, and then we had a couple of local residents in the Whalum area actually approach us about wanting to consider these parcels a bit more explicitly as open space or recreation purposes. And these are the parcels at 225 West Street, and, excuse me, 225 Pleasant Street and 671 West Street. So I will share my screen now.
And I will do my best to show this presentation. Apologies. And you're seeing that all right?
We are.
I am.
Okay, great. So the Whalum District, as many of you probably know, is the most densely populated portion of our town. As you can see by the, by the lot sizes in here and how many lots there are, it's by far the densest populated portion of our town, and it has access to the fewest open space resources of any other place in our town. We have a lot of conservation lands in the north and west part of the town. We have a lot of conservation lands in the eastern tier. We don't have much in the western tier. So access to open space and recreation resources in the Whalum District is, is, is less, and it's more densely populated. So we have more people that have less access. So it's an issue of equity in terms of access, and it's, it's an issue of quality of life. And what's pictured here is the parcel at 671 West Street. 671 West Street was originally purchased for school purposes. It was supposed to be a place for a new school. As you can see, there's a lot of wetland on the property. It was not ultimately developed for school purposes, and ultimately, the care and control was transferred back to the Board of Selectment. All general municipal properties are under the care and control of the Board of Selectment, if they're not designated to a specific care and control of the department, cemetery department, highway department, Conservation Commission, Recreation, or Parks Commission, rather. So this is a parcel that has long been sitting here vacant, municipally owned, and the neighbors have begun to use it and have used it for a very long time as open space. And you can see there's a well-developed trail network that traverses the entirety of the property. There's a substantial wetland in Brook that flows through the property, and there are multiple points of access, including an existing informal parking area in this area. The parcel in the, in the, in your packet, it said the parcel's 40 acres. I noticed that as a typo. It's actually a little more than 66 acres in size. And it has, this is the area in the vicinity of that informal parking area on West Street. You can see easy access on West Street, easy access into the trails, and the trails are quite nice. You know, they wander through a variety of different habitats, including this beautiful wetland. And, you know, lots of different habitat types that are available there, and interesting, just interesting things for people to do and see. And you can see, you can get out into various portions of the property very easily on this existing network of trails. Somebody's asking to come in. Let me see if I can do that while I'm presenting. All right. Just going to keep moving through here. One of the things you'll note is that there are areas in the trail that, you know, it's good for the informal access that's using, but, you know, if we wanted to create it as a, as a conservation area or as a recreation area, you know, improving some of these crossings with more suitable bridges or footpaths or things would be a useful thing to do. Again, just going to buzz through some slides here. More trails. So sort of a ready-made conservation area for all intents and purposes. The Pleasant Street parcel is quite different. Pleasant Street parcel is about 40 acres in size, and it's all agricultural lands, relatively flat, rolling. And interesting, you know, from a conservation perspective, yes, it's currently farmed by a local farmer. And I think it's just hay at this point. But it has other potential recreational opportunities, you know, where you can do certain things in the woods, you can do certain things in the fields here. And there's also the potential for development of, you know, recreational fields, should that be something of interest to the town. The, the other nice thing about this is it forms a greenway. So if you think of, here's, here's Whalum, these are the lights over by the CVS on Electric Ave. Emerald Place is just off the map here, and you cross, you cross at that intersection sidewalks over to the, to the waterfront at Whalum. Sidewalks down to the Whalum District, you can get into all this, all connected. This is the solar farm, the, the solar, the solar owners have expressed a willingness to allow for pedestrian access across their property. You have, this is the Pleasant Street parcel here, the 48, 40-acre parcel, that's the Pleasant Street parcel, with access out to Pleasant Street. And then this is the Laurel Bank Conservation Area with its trail networks that then go down into the Twin City parcel, out towards that, that way. So there's this tremendous ability to connect a whole bunch of interesting resources and provide a real sort of emerald necklace, if you will, in our most densely populated portion of town. And I am stuck. And so that's sort of an overview of these two parcels. And what, what I was hoping to discuss with the board today is the ability, and how do I give this back to you, Tom, so that?
If you click on Participants at the bottom of your screen, it should be Participants?
Yep.
Okay, and then it'll bring up a list, and then just highlight me and say, make host.
Make host. There you go. Good. Now you can let everybody in. So the Open Space Committee is really sort of intrigued by this idea of these two parcels for open space and recreation purposes. But we realize that those aren't the only two potential uses for these parcels. only two potential uses for these parcels and that honestly, we need to have, i- if we're going to engage the process of determining the future of generally municipal, general municipally owned properties, that we should take a more holistic approach and engage a broader, um, audience in the conversation and see, you know, maybe, maybe the cemetery department needs more lands. Maybe, maybe, you know, right? There's all, all kinds of different potential future uses for these parcels that we should consider. And open space and recreation is certainly, are certainly a couple of those things. And so what we would like to do and we'd like, and, and since the Board of Selectment has care and control of the property, we'd, we'd like, uh, your, your blessing to do that is lead a process that would be an open process that would seek the input of different boards and committees and seek the input of, of our citizens about what the future of this, uh, these parcels should be. And if there is consensus around that, bring a proposal to a future, uh, town meeting, either, uh, the upcoming spring town meeting, uh, nearly a year from now, or even special town meeting after that. Some, sometime in the future, uh, where we can bring this forward, uh, and have the townspeople make a vote at town meeting. And so that's what we're looking to do on these two parcels in particular. And, uh, with the understanding that, uh, there are also other general municipal properties that we will continue to evaluate and may bring similar, uh, uh, proposals forward in the future for. Uh, but these two are obvious ones that we think are, are really deserving of this consideration at this time and, uh, we would like, uh, like to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kibbe. I, as a one member, I would say, first of all, thanks for the, the, the presentation and the overview of the two properties. And as I didn't know where this is actually going and what your final request was going to be, I'm glad it got where it went to because that was the first thing I thought of. It was like before we, we changed the use of these and maybe changed the care and, and, uh, maintenance of these to whatever other bodies are in town, it would be good to reflect on what other needs of other people will be. So we're perfectly aligned, uh, although we have not spoken about this before. So I, I would love for your group to take the lead and establish a procedure, not only for these properties, but establish a procedure that we can use going forward where you guys enumerate a, a, a process by which we engage other people in the town and other committees, commissions and boards, so that when a property comes available, we can, you know, be, give them notification and let them weigh in on how it may or may not affect, uh, their, their particular, uh, portion of the town and how the properties may actually benefit or do something unbeknownst to anybody else that, you know, would have ramifications unforeseen. So I think it's a great idea personally. I don't know that we have the ability to give blessings, but I can certainly, I would certainly encourage the process. I would open it up to the board if anybody has any questions. Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I'm gonna add my endorsement to this whole approach too. Uh, I, I, I like this a lot and, uh, there are two properties, uh, right now in front of you. Uh, well, I'll actually be sort of, I'll be liaising with this committee so that, uh, around which you can build this, this process for future application to new properties as they come, uh, you know, before, before the open space or, or under the consideration of open space. I like this idea a lot. It, 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 it's creates broad communication, uh, across multiple boards, uh, multiple stakeholders and makes a great deal of sense to me.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah. Well, first I wanna, I wanna give a big shout out to Mr. Proctor for how well this presentation looks. I see that he's credited toward the end of, uh, as being the contributor to this. And these photos are really dramatic and nice. So, uh, a lot of work went into this presentation, obviously. So first, you know, thank you for that. Um, you know, I think that mo- I think this is a great idea, uh, to look into alternative uses here. You know, one thing that I would, my initial gut reaction is that I'm, I'm not in favor of transferring either of these parcels to the Conservation Commission, um, period. I think that we've, I think we've put a lot of land in conservation over the last couple of years and I'd like for us to collect a little bit of data on who's using it, how often it's being used, um, you know, before we start looking to add to it and permanently lock up properties that could be used by other departments and for other uses. So I think that the process that you're, that you're suggesting, which is to engage other stakeholders in town to, uh, identify what those needs, um, are or potentially can be, you know, towns of our country is around forever, uh, then, you know, we're gonna need land forever. And, you know, there will be a need for future schools, there will be a need for things that we can't now envision. Um, and so I think it's important to have large parcels such as these that, you know, maybe there's a usage that's good for the next fifty years or the next hundred years, but that preserves, uh, a piece of land, uh, for usage in another two hundred or so years. So I think this is a great start. I echo what Mr. Alonso said, which is that it would be helpful to, uh, if you guys are able to figure out what a good process would be, to look at these parcels in the future and kind of get that stakeholder input. Um, but I would, my, my initial gut is, is I would steer away from creating more conservation land, um, and instead using the land in a way that, you know, there's nothing against the town itself owning land that's used for conservation purposes. Um, and that there, you know, I, I do see, especially with the, with the West Street parcel, that that, you know, I can envision that that parcel would be used for a very long period of time for conservation related purposes, but that there may be a need, like I said, further, much further down the line to use it for something else. So thank you for this presentation and thanks for the path ahead.
Thank you. Anybody else in the board have any comments, questions?
I, I just, I won't belabor it. I, I share the views, uh, of the, of the board members, Brandon. And, uh, I just wanted to say, great job, another good job, uh, by you and Dave and whoever else was, uh, involved in the process and, uh, and thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Franco?
I, I, I appreciate Mr. Jeffrey's, um, inputs there with regard to the conservation aspect. I mean, that may just, that may be jumping the gun a little, a little bit, like, because this is very preliminary thing. I still think though, that there could be some value in the general proposition of involving them in the discussion so that there's a process in place for when future properties, uh, you know, come into the process, they're sort of already a part of it. Um, uh, for when, uh, putting something under their purview might be appropriate. That's all. So, I mean, I think it's pretty premature right now to say that you're planning on sending this over to conservation.
Yeah, I have a, I have a, from what Mr. Kibbe said, and he can certainly respond for himself, but my understanding of what he outlined is, we don't want to have an end goal and just build a foundation about how we get there. It's like the op- the absolute opposite, which is, okay, what are, what are the people's needs out there? And then look at who could use it and how they could use it and how those purposes already served in town and see where it can be best placed. And, and maybe to, to what Mr. Jeffrey said, maybe it stays in the town's hands and we just give access to it and keeps it in our hands. Because I think Mr. Jeffrey brings a good point of it, is that, you know, they, we don't know what could come up. That was purchased for school, uh, school reasons or school building reasons back whenever that purchase was and it didn't happen. That doesn't mean, you know, seventy years from now, we don't have something that we need. So yeah, I agree. So I think looking at everything is really a good idea and that's a, the best plan forward.
I, the only other thing I would say is that, you know, obviously, um, the Open Space and Recreation Committee is interested in open space and recreation. And so, um, you know, so we're, it's, it's coming, it's coming to our attention because we think there may be a good reason to preserve it for open space and recreation. So I, I, I'm, and I'm not gonna be shy to say that because I mean, clearly that's, that's, that's our goal, the goal of our committee. Um, uh, I'm not bringing other parcels before the, the, the select board right now that would be good for the cemetery department necessarily because that's their hunt. Um, and so, so we are, we are coming at it with a certain, uh, uh, persuasion for sure. Uh, but I will say is that we have, I mean, we understand that there are these, this, this broader potential interest for all of these different other purposes. And we do not want to try to, uh, 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 jam this down the throats of our, of our fellow citizens in terms of making it a, a certain way. We want it to be an open process and, and build consensus around it. And if there isn't consensus, then it should stay general municipal. Um, you know, so, so, uh, but, but, but we'll be clear is that we think that, uh, adding, uh, conservation and recreation opportunities, uh, to the most densely populated corner of our town, uh, where they don't have immediate access necessarily to conservation and recreation, uh, resources like, like other places in town, is a good thing, uh, for the citizens of those towns and for the overall value of our community. Um, you know, you don't find, uh, uh, i- if a piece of real estate abuts a conservation area, you'll find that it mentions it in the real estate ad because it is an attribute that adds value to that home. And, uh, and so having protected open space spotted throughout our community is not only important for the quality of life of our citizens, but it's also very important for our overall, overall value, uh, in our property as well. Uh, if, if this was, if we were built all the way to the gills with no green space, this would be a totally different community to live in. And I think we all recognize that and our citizens highly value that. And that was reflected in our open space plan and the surveys that we conducted when we spoke with the citizens about what our needs are for our open space and recreation in town. Well, so, um...
Not to put my own bias on it, but if this town was built to the, you know, chock full of, of all development and no green space, it would be a very different place for you to live in because I would no longer live in this place because that is not a, an area that most people want to live in. So, uh, as far as your point, I just want to point out, you're, you, you make a point, sure, you're coming at it with a certain slant with the Open Space and Recreation Committee, but you came to us saying you're gonna, you know, entertain other things and you made, you made a particular mention of the Cemetery Commission, they should be on their own hunt. But you know what? They're not mutually exclusive. There are, there are large cemeteries like Mount Auburn and other places that, that share passive recreation along with a cemetery because they're just beautiful. There are a lot of bird watchers go to Mount Auburn. Not everybody's going to visit loved ones, uh, but you can still be reverent of those spaces and they can coexist. So, I mean, it's a great use of multiple bodies using the same land. So I know you know that. I just wanted to say that for the public.
Nope. It's a great point. And, and I mean, we, I, I, to be clear, we definitely want this to be an open and inclusive process and we do not want to just go to the town meeting, town meeting and say, this has to be conservation land and try to, try to make our case there. We really want there to be input, broad input and, and have an honest and open conversation about it. I'd rather have that in, in, in a, a planning forum and in a, in a, uh, decision-making forum rather than on town meeting floor. I want this to be inclusive.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that you've been in this town long enough to know that if we went with town meeting and say, it has to be this way, you know what they're trying to be.
Yep. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, no, I just wanna kind of just, uh, follow up and just say that with this process, you mentioned, uh, open space and, and I think you kind of took a lot of my comment from me. So I'll be saying, is that, you know, there is a way and I, I hope that we can start a process. I hope that this is the beginning of a new way of looking at open space where it doesn't necessarily need to be preserved indefinitely as conservation land. Certainly, I think that there's a need to have this space. You mentioned it's already being used, that there's a need to have space in our most densely populated area that is, you know, able to be used for passive recreation. I think that, I really think that, that this is great that you're presenting this. Um, again, I, I hope that in this process that the new, a- as you work through this and engage all these other stakeholders, I, I'm trusting that we can probably create a new mold here with how we can use land as, as Mr. Alonso mentioned for multiple purposes, that maybe just takes a different approach.
One, one point just to, just to, um, uh, underscore is that, uh, one thing having properties specifically dedicated to conservation or recreation does is it opens it up to, uh, various forms of funding that would otherwise not be available. So, um, if it's dedicated to, uh, the Parks Commission, for instance, it opens it up to various state grants that if it was general municipal property are not available to the town. Uh, same thing for, uh, for things like, uh, trails grants and things like that. If it was dedicated as open space land and under the care and control of Open Space Committee, now you actually have a source of funding that you can go after to help improve the property where you don't have that access, uh, uh, to things, uh, grant monies in particular, uh, for, for, um, undedicated parcels. So it's, it, it is one of the factors that we, I think we should add to the conversation, uh, when we're discussing the future of these parcels.
It would be helpful as well to know what that funding could be. You know, like if, if a conservation status preserves a property indefinitely and opens us up to fifty thousand dollars in funding, then maybe that's not worth it, you know? But if there's significant money that's available, um, then, you know, so I, I, I would be interested to know what that access could be based on the designated status. And again, I think it would also be helpful to have some history of the land that we've set aside for conservation in the last five years or so, you know, who's using it, how often it's being used and what funding resources were tapped for those properties.
Great. That's easy enough to pull together.
So beside, beside our agreement, which it sounds like you unanimously have, uh, with the four of us and, and, uh, I have a funny hunch that if Mr. Dwyer were here, you'd have a unanimous between the five of us. What else do you need from us going forward?
Uh, participation. Uh, we will, uh, we, we'll have a meeting, uh, next Tuesday ourselves and we'll, um, uh, take this, uh, this, uh, action tonight, uh, and, and begin lining out what we think is the right process to begin with. And, uh, so you'll be hearing from us again and, uh, and, uh, stay tuned. I'm sure we'll, we'll hold some, uh, public forums on it and, and other things, uh, to, to gain input. And, uh, with any luck, maybe we can all go for a walk, uh, at some point this summer. I think that would be great. Um, but other than that, uh, at this point, uh, we will, uh, continue to keep you apprised of our activities and, and, uh, and, uh, uh, let you know if there are other specific things we need in the future.
Sounds good. Mr. Franco?
Oh, sorry. I just did something I wasn't supposed to do and put my own hand down. Sorry. Uh, I just wanted to know what time of day that meeting, you expect that meeting to take place next Tuesday?
Uh, six thirty PM at the Ritter.
Okay. Um, that obviously provides conflict to me, but, um, I'll have to get brought up the speed on it because we'll have a conflict with this meeting. So.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I see that we have a hand up from one of our park commissioners. Uh, Ms. Lockwood, I will, let's see, ask you to unmute.
There we go. Um, so I just wanna thank Mr. Kibbe for, you know, doing the presentation. I'm new to the Open Space, um, Committee and new to the Parks Committee, but I've been impressed how, um, you know, how much he values the process of opening up these two parcels for discussion. Um, I also want to say that I, you know, I personally, not necessarily from the Parks Commission, fully agree with him. That is the most densely populated area of town and we need to make sure that it's green space for that, for the, for that side of town. Uh, that is something that if someone were to ask me today, if I have an agenda for Parks Commission, I would say that's one of them. I think we need to have more, um, recreation space available there. But one thing that I, I think we, you know, we've been talking a lot about the conservation, uh, you know, designating land for conservation, not designating too much. Um, you know, what's the right balance and what's the right use? Um, and some of this land has been used for agriculture right now. And, you know, we ha- we have had talk about maybe maintaining for agriculture. One thing that no one has mentioned yet, and I just want to bring to mind is that over the past five years, I believe we have, the town Lunenburg has acquired a lot of land for exclusive use of agriculture. And that was, um, I think some of the landy property and most recently the Pierce Tree Farm. Um, so we're doing a good job on keeping open space in general, uh, and the town's investing some money, uh, some, on, on getting those properties being protected in perpetuity. Um, but right now, as, as talking about agricultural use, I think we might be able to give up that parcel for agricultural use because we have added other land to our books to, for agricultural use. And just saying that as we move forward, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And certainly the Agricultural, uh, Commission will be one of the boards we will reach out to. Um, and I think their involvement in this conversation will be, um, invaluable as well.
Any other further questions for Mr. Kibbe? I want to thank you again for the work. I want to thank you again for the work you have done tonight and for the work you and your committee have continued to do over the past years. It's had a real profound impact on the town, so thank you for that. And, uh, through you, uh, thank you to the whole, your whole committee.
Thank you very much. We'll be sure to pass that on. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time, everyone, and we'll talk soon.
You got it. Thanks so much. Um, Madam Town Manager, do you have any objection to us taking your annual appointments, uh, uh, and pushing them and do some of these other other agenda items first?
No, I do not.
Okay, so let's go to current business. We have pride event requests. So just an introduction, I understand, of course, most everybody knows that June is Pride Month. And there were some flag raisings and some some, uh, formal or semi-formal flag raisings in some of our neighboring towns. And it was noted that Lunenburg was not one of those towns who who had any kind of ceremony. And, uh, I I assured people on social media that, uh, you know, of some errors that were put out there as reasons why that we pay, you know, we charge for our flagpole or something like that. And I I assured them that we had no requests to do any. That's why we weren't doing any. And as soon as that that was posted or maybe even touched before, we did get a request for us to do it. So we do have a request for us to, uh, issue a proclamation recognizing Pride Month and and the month of June and also to raise a pride flag at one of the flagpole locations in town center. So that request is before us now. It should be in your drive, in your Google Drive, regarding the proclamation that that has been requested and that we, or is being offered. And also the, uh, the rainbow flag email requesting that. Now, the rainbow, I want to start with the, let's start with the proclamation. Has everybody read the proclamation on the board?
Yes.
And if anybody in the audience here is here to speak to this, please raise your hand and I will unmute you. Okay, so I have one. And two, so I'm going to ask you to unmute and just be ready, but we'll have a discussion among the board first. And, okay, so keep your hands raised so I remember to call on you. So it's a straight, it's a, it's fairly straightforward proclamation, uh, I guess. I mean, I'm assuming it would probably be read at any event of the the pride, of the flag raising. Or if if people feel it appropriate now, I could read it now so people understand at home what we're discussing. I don't know. I'll entertain a input from the board here, how they would like to handle it.
I think it's appropriate to read it now.
All right. So what we are being asked to vote on and consider is the proclamation honoring Pride Month in the town of Lunenburg. And here's the proposal. Whereas the town, the Lunenburg Select Board recognizes June twenty twenty one as Pride Month throughout the town of Lunenburg. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQIA plus individuals have had immeasurable impact to the culture, civic and economic successes of our local community and country. And whereas the town of Lunenburg is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQIA plus people in our diverse community. And whereas it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Lunenburg's LGBTQIA plus community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Select Board hereby proclaims the month of June twenty twenty one as Pride Month in the town of Lunenburg in support of the LGBTQIA plus community. Signed, if we vote on this this day, uh, eighth day of June twenty twenty one. So let's start with that. Uh, if anybody has any questions or comments on the board about that proclamation.
I have some comments.
Sure.
But they're they're kind of just general, um, I think to the whole thing. Um, you know, I wasn't sure if I wanted to make it in public comments or not, but I figured it was topic specific, so I'll make it now. You know, when I I joined the Army in nineteen ninety nine and, um, and shortly after being in, I was in, I was a college, uh, student and, uh, and the Army had a policy of don't ask, don't tell. And one of the first research papers I did in college was on that don't ask, don't tell policy. And as a young soldier, in my experience in the Army, I I met with several generals and high ranking officers and and I concluded that I supported don't ask, don't tell. Um, although I am, you know, not a heterosexual and I, you know, now I'm married, have a husband, and I certainly knew that then, um, I supported the policy because I, for a lot of reasons. But over the course of my, and and over the course of my career, I adhered to it, um, as well. And so, you know, quite rigidly. But I think over time, there came a point where I recognized the obvious conflict um, of individuals who have different, um, sexual attractions and what that impact really is on armed forces. And and I, you know, went to Washington, D C. and lobbied for the repeal of don't ask, don't tell. I I wrote several letters to senators and our representatives to repeal don't ask, don't tell. And it was quite the celebration when it, when it was repealed. And it being in the Army, I also saw that transition from the pre don't ask, don't tell period to the, um, repeal of it. And I will say that having a more inclusive environment resulted in soldiers being more open with one another. Uh, it resulted in, uh, increase in cohesion and and unity. Uh, it resulted in in everyone feeling generally more supported. And I think that our society at large i- is similar in many ways, uh, in that, you know, people have very strong opinions. Some people have very strong opinions against the LGBTQIA community. Um, and they're entitled to have those opinions. Um, but I think that the the reality of our experience is that people can contribute in substantive substantive ways. Um, and who they are, who they love, who they're married to, uh, how they perceive themselves, what they identify as, that that has no bearing on anyone's ability to perform their jobs, on anyone's ability to be a active and supporting member of a family. And in fact, when you have a, when you have a community or organization that is more supportive of, uh, these things, that the result is a better community for all. So I I think that, you know, this is a necessary thing for us to do, uh, to show especially the young people that they live in a community uh, where we support them achieving all their goals, all their dreams. Um, and that we support whatever, uh, identity, uh, they have. I think that that is a good thing. So I I wholeheartedly support, uh, this proclamation, uh, and the flag.
Mr. Franco, you had your hand up and you took it down. Are you?
Uh, yeah, no, I I will add, I, um, thank you very much, Mr. Jeffries, for your perspective on this. Um, and I just want to say in general terms, I mean, this is very easy for me to support. This is a proclamation in favor of liberty and equality, and I'm in favor of liberty and equality. At some point, uh, maybe such proclamations won't be necessary. I I certainly hope so, that we grow and evolve as a society to the point where explicit proclamations such as this will no longer be a necessity. But this is not that point. And therefore, uh, gestures and overt expressions such as this are necessary at this time and and, um, well, I support it for that, for that reason.
I will say, uh, for myself, not only do I support it as well, but I proudly support it and I am fully behind every word of that proclamation that it said. Uh, you know, with with the, probably the strongest emphasis on on the second whereas, whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. I I think nothing sums up to me what the ideals of this country are than that. And to those people who don't enjoy those because of other forms of discrimination, I think it's everybody's right and everybody's responsibility to fight against that uh, and promote diversity. Uh, you know, every fiber that creates the fabric that is our society, the whole society is strengthened by every single one of those threads, every one of those fibers. And so I fully and proudly support this, this proclamation uh, and the following discussion of raising the pride flag, uh, as well. Uh, we have two members of the public who wish to speak. Uh, they have indicated, so I will go to Robin and Jaclyn Mayo first. These are just the order I see them, so.
Hello.
Hello.
Nice to be here. Um, so my name is Robin Mayo and, um, actually I'm here to introduce myself to you. I am the Secretary of Northern Worcester County Pride, Board of Directors. And so I'm actually here with my wife Jaclyn. However, it's her office and I've thrown her out of the chair for now. Um, there's only room for one of us. So, um, I'm here because our constituents, um, through No Woko have been calling on us for about two years now to work with the town of Lunenburg. And as a resident, we live at thirty eight Otis Street, um, and very interested in that green space, by the way. Um, but as a resident and as a board member, I wanted to join the meeting tonight, put a face with the name and give you guys a good unified point of contact within town so that whenever you have any pride related questions, you know who to go to. Um, so we're here to offer you guys help with the flag raising, actually. We just did the two in Lemonster and Fitchburg, as you've heard. And actually, our president, Anthony Bevenzi, would have been here tonight. However, he's actually at Gardner City Hall right now, lighting it up in rainbow color, so he couldn't join us tonight.
Excellent.
Um, and in the pro, on behalf of the entire Board of Directors, we are so thankful to hear your comments. It is so, so wonderful and refreshing to hear, to hear such strong words coming from, from our town representatives. Um, we also wanted to offer, um, not all, for for the record, um, we, we had sent that that proclamation to you simply as a potential template that you could use. Feel free to change it however you want to. We actually have, um, the proclamations currently from Gardner, uh, not Gardner, forgive me, from Fitchburg and Lemonsters Mayor's up on our social media sites. And we anticipate to share the one from Gardner tonight. Um, we also wanted to offer you guys a flag to raise on any poll you wanted to. It's, it's not really a matter of where, which poll, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be the town common, anywhere we can gather and the people of town can see that we support them. And as one of you mentioned, especially the younger ones. And so in short, we'd love to do everything in our power to make it, as Mr. Franco so rightly pointed out, as easy as possible for Lunenburg to join our region in recognizing a critical time of the year. And for me, as well as for the board, but especially for me as a resident, it's my hope and our hope that we can form a longstanding continuing relationship with the Lunenburg Select Board. And together, we can all serve just another one of the great communities we serve. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. And I will say that I, uh, uh, we haven't voted on this, but I'm I'm going to say that we will take you up on the fact of getting the flag because I don't believe up until now that we don't have one. So that would be helpful. And Madam Town Manager, please tell me if I am wrong that we do have one, but I don't believe we do.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You do now.
Okay, well, thank you. And we would like to, you know, obviously, we know we're coming to this late and because it's already the eighth of the month and we want to make sure that we have the raising as soon as we can. So whatever, whatever we can do informally, we certainly want to do it at, uh, at at town center. We want it, again, to put it anywhere else would not send the right signal. We want to make sure that it's proudly displayed right in 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 town center, one of the prominent flagpoles that we have. So we'll, you know, we'll choose which one. I think we have a couple to to choose from. Um, but yes, we would love to do that. And and more importantly, what you said, Robin, about wanting to establish a more continuous relationship and dialogue that has been, uh, you know, this has come up before us in various, uh, manners and not always, uh, from No Woko's point of view, not always in in the most positive light because of incidents happening in town, not anything because of your organization. And it didn't happen that way as smoothly as it should have. And and I want to make sure that we work to to remedy that.
That's why I'm here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And we have, uh, Stephanie Trudell or Trudel?
Trudell.
Trudell, okay.
Um, I just wanted to voice my emphatic support for our town flying a pride flag. I think it's extremely important to echo what our No Woko counterpart has said. I fully support that. I'm so pleased that the board seems receptive to this. Um, and again, I just want to reiterate that it is so important for us to take an active stand on this issue and show that all of the members of our town are honored and valued and are seen as a part of our community. And being a small town, I think it's very important that we make that very, very clear. And if we'd like to fly a second pride flag, I also have one that I would like to let you guys borrow, and I would be happy to do so.
I appreciate that. We will, we'll take that up. Let's, let's start with one, I guess. And, uh, well, I got it.
There are a lot of them. You can make them a collection.
Uh, I I appreciate all your words. I appreciate all of you coming on in support of it too. And, uh, and hopefully this starts the process so that next year we'll, we'll, we'll have this discussion in May so that come, you know, June first or the first weekend, you will, will be, will be at the forefront of this and not playing a little bit of catch up. But I think, I think you'd both agree that, you know, the fact that you heard from the majority of the board members and and, uh, that I think that we want to, and I think the other board member, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Marino speak for himself. But, you know, it's, it's something that I think we all can fully support. And the message that's being, me, being presented and proclaimed is really something that we need people to hear. And, uh, of all, of all ages, I mean, certainly young people, but everyone. I mean, and we have to stand in solidarity with with all of our fellow citizens, uh, regardless of a multitude of potential differences that really amount to nothing compared to the fact that we're shared citizens and humans on the planet, so. If anyone else would like to say anything, this would be the time.
So you're gonna let me speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank, no, one, Robin, why'd it take two years? I I don't understand. Oh, she's muted.
Why did, oh, hold on a second. Hold on, I got, Robin muted and only I can unmute here, so.
Forgive me. I thought it was done. Um, the reason it's taken two years is because frankly, we as a board were very disorganized two years ago. Um, we were putting together our first pride and things were chaotic and hectic. And then last year, nothing happened. In fact, I'm pretty sure last March just ended this past March. So that's really a.
Well, actually, that's refreshing. I was hoping that it wasn't any, anything that we did.
There's been miscommunication, but honestly, we've seen it as miscommunication the entire time. It's, it's been obvious miscommunication whenever it's happened, you know? The people chat, things get garbled, and that's just the way it is. Now we're here and let's rock on, you know?
Right. Okay, well, very, good luck with that. And, uh, I agree with with Mr. Franco's comment about, you know, why, at some point, we won't have to do this, um, going forward. It's great. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, excellent. Ms. Lockwood.
Hi, so I just want to make one small correction, uh, to Robin, that there are several pride flags around town center. They are not government, uh, funded, but there are many, many of your neighbors who have proudly displayed a pride flag for many years. So, but I'll be happy to see one more in the town center.
Understood, heard, and it's, I I just want to echo the sentiments of our Select Board that it's very important to see it on the government flagpole itself, you know, to see our town endorsing us, to see our town welcoming us. So thank you, though. You're very right, and we love all of our neighbors.
But I will say that the, there's the house that's right on the common. It always has the pride flags out with, uh, like the swags. And since we moved here four years ago, that's always been a a beacon of hope and encouragement to us. So I don't know who lives there, but I love them.
Is that on Lancaster Avenue?
Yes.
I I know whose house that is. I, we could talk about it offline.
Please thank them for my.
Uh, okay, so let's start with the the proclamation first. We've had the discussion. Uh, I entertain a motion from the board to make it official that we, uh, accept this proclamation and make it an official proclamation with signatures, et cetera.
I, I would move to accept the proclamation and make it official.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Now, for the acceptance of the, of the gift of the pride flag and the raising of it, although I guess to Robin and Stephanie, I, I, Stephanie, I'm not sure if you are with Nooko as well. Okay, no, okay, so.
Not in an official capacity.
Not officially, but let's definitely hook up after.
So with the, if we accept the gift of the flag and then work with, with, with members of the community and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, because you're the Secretary of Nooko, Robin, I'm going to ask that it could be through you. If you can organize something, you know, in a shorter time than possible, it, you know, we'll, we'll try to get the word out. I don't want it to be a two weekly time because it kind of, kind of negates the whole idea of June being pride month. But it does have to be tomorrow either, whatever the quickest time we can to do an informal raising so we can read the proclamation, whoever we can get locally, but so that we get the flag raised. If you want, if that's a method that works with you and you will get back to us when you want to have that, either through myself or the town manager, then we can, you know, quickly get that word out on social media and get people there. I'm sure you have your own methods of getting people there as well.
We do, and we'll get an email chain going immediately.
Okay.
With you and whoever else we need to.
So I would entertain a motion from the board that we accept the, the gift of the flag and then accept the fact that we will have a, a pride flag raising ceremony to be deter, date to be determined in, in short order, in short calendar time, uh, but that we approve it in advance.
I'll make the motion. Uh, I move to accept the gift of the pride flag from Nooko and to coordinate with them on a flag raising in the center of town.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. Any further discussion on this?
Uh, the only thing I would add is if I can just ask, uh, I know I've met Robin and Jackie a couple of years back. And if I can just ask for you to reach out to me directly, uh, if you go to the town website, my email address is there. If you contact the town manager or lane, they can provide it with myself, remember?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, without further discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So we have everything done, so we will now be in, you know, it's officially done that we're part of pride month. But I want it to be declared when we do the, the raising that it's visibly evident to everybody. I, I thank you both for, or well, three of you, even though Jackie's not in the frame this time, but all three of you for coming on, there she is. And, you know, sharing your points of view. And I'm glad with Nooko that, you know, although it took some time and some miscommunications in the past, I'm glad I think we're on the right track and I'd like to keep it there. I sure, I'm sure that you feel the same way and, uh, and give our best to Mr. Bevenzi. Uh, and I'm sorry he could not be here, but he sent excellent stewards of the organization, so.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And we'll look for your emails about when we can do this.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move, let's leave the emergency paid leave. I'm just trying to deal with people who are on, so let's talk about the vote to approve the park commission's acceptance of bleachers donated by the McNally family. I will turn this over to the town manager for an intro. And then we have a couple of members of the, of the park commission here on the call who may want to speak to this.
Yes, so the McNally family has donated a set of bleachers for the McNally fields and the Parks Commission met at their last meeting, voted to accept the donation. The second step of that process for tangible property is for the Board of Selectmen, Select Board to approve the acceptance by the Parks Commission.
Okay. So would anybody on the Parks Commission wish to speak to this or is it self evident what is being asked? Mister Passios.
Yes, thank you, Dave Passios, fifty six Whiting Street, member of the Parks Commission. Uh, I'd just like to thank the McNally family for everything that they do over at McNally Park. Uh, this is not the only donation of funds and services that they've given to that park over the years. This one here is substantial, so we wanted to make sure that the ownership of the physical property was transferred correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I, obviously, when people donate, we, we certainly wish to thank them. And when people donate, you know, repeatedly wish to thank them even greater. So I wish to thank the McNally family for that donation. And I think the request here is pretty straightforward for us to accept it. So I would open it up to the board if anybody has any questions, Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious, certainly I'm going to vote to accept the gift. I'm just curious as to what kind of bleachers they are and how many people they hold and, you know, just.
Do we have particulars about the blue there? Mr. Passios will hopefully answer our question.
Yeah, I haven't got exact details as to the specs of the capacity and so on. But they are the same type of bleachers that had been placed at the park, I believe I heard about ten years ago. They're aluminum or galvanized frame. They have the safety fences around three sides. Uh, I'm sure they're ADA compliant as much as bleachers can be. And they'll last for a very long time. We, uh, I had actually contacted the DPW director because the set of bleachers that this replaced were the old style steel and wood plank. It was the last one at that park that had not been upgraded. So it, it's a perfect upgrade and we were pleased to have it donated.
Anybody else? Any questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to accept the gift of the bleachers by the McNally family for McNally Park.
Make a motion that we accept the bleachers donated by the McNally family.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Okay, so let's go back and pick up some of the things that we did. Is there anything else with somebody waiting? I don't believe so. Okay, so ratification of the town manager's annual appointments. The, the town manager, seeing how long the meeting went last week, graciously decided to postpone her appointments to this week. Uh, and of course, her appointments like ours don't take effect until July first. But, uh, we can look at them now. They were in our, they were in our Google Drive and I will turn over the town manager to do the subsequent reading. I'll let you read all of them and then if there's something that I, I, I would hope that the board, like we do with the consent calendar at town meeting, if there's one that you want to speak to alone, you know, let us know, but otherwise we can vote on these after the town manager reads through the appointments. Is that okay with everyone?
Okay with me.
Okay. Now the town manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, um, so these are all annual appointments, um, some to committees and some positions. First is the American with Disabilities Committee, Barbara Reynolds. Animal Control Officer Kathleen Como. Building Commissioner Casey Burlingame. Alternate Building Commissioner Eric Shertrond. Dam Keeper Ronald Wilson. Assistant Dam Keeper Rich Patry. Emergency Management Director Fire Chief Patrick Sullivan. Races Control Officer Ralph Schwick. Assistant Races Officer Brian LeBlanc. And Member Janine Swick. Field Driver Kathy Como. Forest Warden Patrick Sullivan. Hazardous Waste Coordinator Heather Lemieux. Hearings Officer Heather Lemieux. Inspector of Plumbing and Gas Gary Williams. Assistant Inspector of Plumbing and Gas Richard Kepnis. Pound Keeper Gene Larkin. Public Weirs Rich Reynolds, Aaron Moran, Brian Contois, Jay Valery, Mike Reynolds, Jean, uh, sorry, Jen Oliveria. John Denapoli. Brittany Woodhouse. Inspector of Weights and Measures Steve Cooley. Inspector of Wires John Beery. Assistant Wiring Inspector David Stone. Clock Winders Tom Alonso. Lou Franco, Mike Kidney, Chuck Benanesia. John Lynch, William Tyler and John Hoag. Tree Warden Rob, Rob Olivia. Veteran Service Officer TJ Blauzer.
Let's take the, we'll take the police officers separately.
Okay.
Those are on separate lists, so let's do this list. Does anybody have any questions about these? Aside the obvious, that there seems to be a little bit of nepotism with the hazardous waste coordinator and hearings officer. That aside, those must obviously be the high paying jobs.
Yeah.
Mr. Franco.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if this counts as pulling, uh, pulling an issue out, but, but from the consent agenda, that's not, not what I intend to do here. I just wanted to point out that John Hoag would be new to the clock winding team and that I went up to the clock with him on the twenty seventh of, of May, so he's been familiarized with it a little bit. But of course, he'll go through the usual, the training that every other clock member goes through. But I'm enthusiastic about his joining the, the group, so.
Excellent. Uh, I'm glad, I'm, I'm enthusiastic about us having a clock to wind now that it's fixed, so that's good. Because it's been way, way long for that to happen again.
Yeah.
You know, the late, when that, that got renovated, that clock for the two hundred and seventy fifth, there was, uh, the late Gene Hobbs was, you know, adamant and that whole committee was adamant about getting that done. And it was such a celebration when that clock came online. So every time I see it down, I, I think of Gene and all the push that she did. And that two, the entire two hundred and seventy fifth committee put behind that. So I'm glad to see it back up and running and she's probably smiling down right now. Anybody need to pull any of this out? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion that we approve the town, ratify the town manager's appointments as read.
I'll move that we ratify the town manager's appointments as read.
Okay, one second. Okay, all, roll call vote, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And aye for me. So we also have officers. Police officers and special police officers.
I'll start with the police officers.
Okay.
Full time officers, Chief Thomas Gammel, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau, Sergeant Sean Connery, Sergeant Joshua Tashi, Sergeant Sean Zarate, Officer Joshua Matthew, Officer Jonathan Brock, Officer Bradley McNamara, Officer John Morielli, Officer Jacob Lechance, Officer John Wagner, Officer Gage Russell, Officer Cameron Monroe, Officer Anthony Capucci, Officer Jeffrey Hill and Officer Nicholas Marino. Reserve Officers Officer Lisa Milnicki, Officer Robert DeCosta, Officer Benjamin Campbell, Officer Chad Statler, Officer Erin Constantine, Officer Brian Watson, Officer Paul Duquette, Officer Esteban Benia Perez and Officer Joel Ortega.
Okay, any questions about this? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion on these appointments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you just take Nick out of the order? So I can, because I'll have to.
I, I don't, I, I know why you're doing it. I don't think there's any risk here of appointing, uh, of, of you abstaining from that or not. I know why you would because your son is on it, but it's going, I, I will tell you it is going to be approved. So I don't think you have to do that if you don't want to. So we have to do one person individually. It's okay for, for you to vote for.
All right.
Okay, I appreciate that, but thank you for offering.
You're welcome.
So I entertain a motion on this list of officers, reserve and full time and chief and all, you know.
I move to ratify the appointment of the Lunenburg Police Department as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
And an aye for me. And special police officer appointments.
From the town of Shirley, Chief Samuel Santiago, Lieutenant Alfreda Cromwell, Sergeant Jared Yanis, Sergeant Robert Romilly, Detective Matthew Yuliano, Detective William McGinnis, Police Officer Kyle Dodge, Police Officer Dean Parlone, Police Officer Jesus Ostalaza, Ostalaza Junior, Police Officer Monica Jean Batiste, Police Officer Alan Rice, Police Officer Brett Rand, Police Officer Michael Di Madica, Police Officer Kevin Kirch Dorfer. And from Townsend, Chief James Sartell, Lieutenant Mark Giancotti, Lieutenant Christopher Peach, Sergeant Kimberly Mattson, Sergeant George Reedy, Officer Mark Francis, Officer David Phillips, Officer James Landy, Officer Jeffrey Giles, Officer Michael Marchand, Officer Christopher Low, Officer Eric Madica, Officer Christopher Tucker, Officer Paul Theodolo and Officer Dylan Silvestri. Reserve Officer James Marchand, Reserve Officer Tony Brennan, Reserve Officer Christopher Van Vorhu.
Voorhees, yeah.
Voorhees. Reserve Officer Austin Cody. And that is the complete list of reserve officers.
Okay, unless somebody has an objection to one of those, I would entertain a motion to ratify the special police officers from Shirley and Townsend.
Move to ratify the special police officers from Shirley and Townsend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call again, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Aye for me.
Thank you.
Is that all of your appointments?
Yes.
I believe so, yes, okay. So we picked up that one. And then we go to the new emergency paid sick leave policy per act providing for Massachusetts COVID nineteen emergency paid sick leave signed on May twentieth, twenty twenty one. May twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, sorry.
Correct. Yes, so this is a new emergency paid sick leave. As you recall, there was a federal emergency paid sick leave that expired at the end of December of two thousand and twenty. Massachusetts took up a bill and the governor signed an act for an emergency paid sick leave on May twenty eighth. And as outlined in the policy before the board.
Okay. Is there highlights about how this is different than what was already in effect? Inside the timeline, obviously.
It does not include childcare. That's one difference from the federal emergency paid sick leave. Um, and our policy had exempted public safety personnel just for childcare. So this applies to all employees.
The term of this act expires for those people at home. It would be effective through May twenty eighth of this year through September thirtieth of this year. So to the end, basically to the end of the summer.
Or the state funding is exhausted if it's prior to that September thirtieth date.
Wow, okay. So we have no idea when the state funding would, I mean, whether they're going to give us a weekly update about what the monies are. That's kind of a bizarre little twist in that, but okay. Anyway, so until state funding or till the end of the summer or just a scosh past the end of the summer. Okay, uh, do we have to vote on, we don't have to vote on this, this is just informational. This is, this takes effect whether we do anything or not, right?
It does, but this is a policy, so.
All right, so I entertain a motion that the board adopt this policy as written and as legislation that was passed. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And now we're back on track here. Minutes, we didn't have any minutes this week. And we didn't have any warrants this week. Action items, you know, I, 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 I should have said this in the announcements. I'll say it under action items. So, uh, the Chair of the Cemetery Commission sent to thank, uh, send us a letter that he, or CC'd us on a letter that he sent to Monty Tech for them building the cemetery building. And I want to really get behind those comments and really thank Monty Tech for doing a real excellent job on a building that, you know, that had been really fallen and disrepair and helped rebuild a new one. And for all the hard work they did and, and the excellent craftsmanship in, uh, helping really make, uh, bring up some of the facilities of the cemetery commission uh, up to par. So I want to thank them publicly for that. And I thank the, uh, the cemetery commission and, and through, you know, through the, the chair to the whole committee, the whole commission for their work in working with them and in making the, uh, along with the DPW and everybody else who helped make the cemeteries ready for a wonderful, uh, Memorial Day, um, holiday and event. So thank you to all those involved. Committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? I will say that, uh, Finance Committee Appointment Committee meets, uh, for uh, preempting the first in-person select board meeting preamps that because it's earlier, but we will be entertaining uh, Talent Bank interviews, uh, for their vacancies on the Finance Committee next Tuesday. And I think that's the only committee that I'm aware of right now that, uh, has a schedule. Capital Planning will not meet for some time. Mr. Franco.
Yes, Economic Development Committee was scheduled to meet on, uh, when was that? Last Thursday?
Thursday, yep.
Yeah, uh, that, uh, was canceled sort of, uh, promptly when it was realized that there was a double booking. So there was no meeting. So I have nothing to report on that, but I, I just wanted to, uh, get it in the record that, um, there's not, there's, uh, no report because there was no meeting, even though that meeting had been scheduled.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I just want to pick up where, where you left off, Mr. Alonso, uh, to the town manager. Is it, is it possible for us to, uh, have a letter sent over to the students at Monty Tech and the administration as well? Uh, officially from us thanking them for their contributions to the community?
Certainly, we can do that.
Any objection to the board for that? I don't, I don't think anybody could object to that. So yes.
All right. For committee reports, I don't, I don't have any today. The Council of Aging meets next week on Tuesday. Uh, and next Thursday, the library trustees, uh, also meet. The TCP Design Committee meeting is toward the end of the month, so I'll update that next week.
Okay. Uh, no old business, although the next topic, I guess COVID nineteen is by this time old business. Uh, so we will go to the town manager reports and COVID nineteen update, hopefully coming up nearing the last few months of these updates. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you. It would be nice to, yes, he's writing the COVID nineteen update reports. The Board of Health issued their weekly update and the cumulative laboratory confirmed cases as of June fourth was seven hundred and ninety-six. The state report showed seven hundred and fifty-one cases as of June first. There were, so this means that there were zero cases since May twenty eighth.
Excellent.
Yes. So we are now back to gray on the positivity rate, uh, map and that gray being the lowest uh, positivity. The Nishoba Valley Devens Regional Vaccine Clinic will host another vaccination clinic tomorrow from one to six P M. At Clear Path for Veterans New England Building at eighty-four Antietam Street in Devens. Walk appointments are welcome. The vaccine offered at this clinic is the Pfizer vaccine and it's for all persons twelve years of age and older. Site is wheelchair accessible and there's a wheelchair on site. Those wishing to schedule appointment can go to vaxfinder dot mass dot gov. I sent out an email yesterday regarding the lifting in the state of emergency on June fifteenth and uh, all town boards and committees resuming in-person meetings. Uh, so to review that, on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Baker announced that the COVID state of emergency will lift on June fifteenth. The state emergency was originally declared on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, and has been in place since then. Since March tenth, numerous pieces of legislation were enacted, altering significant aspects of municipal governance. And much of that legislation was based on the existence of the state of emergency. Governor's Baker, Governor Baker's executive order that suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, which altered the way public meetings were legally held during the state of emergency by allowing a public body to meet without the public body being physically present and allowed fully remote participation will be rescinded on June fifteenth. This means that beginning on June fifteenth, to comply with the open meeting law, all public bodies must be in person, physically open to the public pursuant to the open meeting law. Beginning on June fifteenth, members of a public body must be physically present at the meeting to participate and satisfy quorum requirements. Means that remote participation by members of the public body is not allowed unless a quorum of the board is present. June fifteenth will be, be the first day that in-person public meetings will be held. Public access and our I T department have set up the town hall meeting room to be able to conduct both in-person and Zoom meetings simultaneously. At this time, this will be limited to those boards and committees that have live broadcast meetings in the town hall uh, prior to March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The agendas for these hybrid meetings must reflect that in part, the in-person location being town hall and the Zoom meeting information. All other meetings will only need to reflect the physical location of the in-person meeting. We understand that the ability to have fully remote meetings allow for greater flexibility in meeting times that boards and committees could meet that did not require reserving a physical space. Given that there are about twenty-eight different boards, committees, and commissions that require meeting space and we have a limited number of meeting rooms, we ask for everyone's patience as we transition back to in-person meetings. In terms of face coverings and other COVID nineteen safety requirements, boarding committee members and meeting attendees that have not been fully vaccinated, meaning have not received two doses of either the Moderna or Pfizer vaccine or a single dose of the Johnson and Johnson more than fourteen days ago, are asked to continue wearing a face covering and socially distance themselves from their fellow board members and members of the public when in-person, uh, indoor meetings resume. We ask that everyone continue to adhere to these safety protocols in order to keep our staff and the public safe. It is also noteworthy that Governor Baker filed legislation on May twenty-fifth to extend certain emergency measures that are currently in place via these executive orders that are set to expire in June fifteenth. This legislation, if enacted, would extend the authority from municipal boards to conduct virtual meetings. However, until this legislation is passed and enacted into law, the above provisions will govern. So if legislation does pass, a public notification message will be sent out and a new plan devised. That's all I have.
Any questions for the town manager on the COVID nineteen update? Okay. Onto the town manager report.
Okay. Announcement of existing vacancies. There is, are two vacancies in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one citizen at large and one representative from the Historical Commission. Two vacancies on the Board of Assessors, which is our joint appointments between the remaining members of the Board of Assessors and the Select Board that would be filled into the, until the next annual town election. One vacancy on the Bylaw Review Committee, two vacancies on, for the Commissioner of Trust Funds, which is also a joint appointment between the remaining members of the Commissioner of Trust Funds and the Select Board until the next annual town election. One, uh, person recommended by the Open Space Committee for the Economic Development Committee, one citizen at large, and one ex officio member that is a business owner for the Economic Development Committee. One vacancy on the Senior Workoff Program Committee and one associate vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in serving on any of these boards, um, can contact uh, or obtain the applications forms through the town website, complete the form and return it to the Select Board's office. Update on a home, the Home Rule Petition for the Jack's Country Variety Store. Petition for additional liquor license at that location. It has gone to its third reading, um, with the House. So.
And that, the third is finally, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Invitation for bids. Bids were solicited for manufacturing supply of the municipal trash bags and retail distribution services that, um, we use those services to, for the bag vendor sending the bags to the retail stores. And we received only one bid and that was from our current vendor, Way Zero. So I will have a report and recommendation to the Select Board at their next meeting on June fifteenth on the proposed fee increase for fiscal twenty-two. Flat Hill Road Drainage, the DPW Director had an onsite meeting with residents from Flat Hill Road, Susan Whalen and Matthew Allison this past Friday. The meeting was to inspect and dis- discuss the existing conditions with both property owners and discuss a possible drainage solution that would discharge the existing runoff into an existing watershed, but also address the underlying, underlying drainage issues. The residents are going to think about this proposal and get back to the DPW Director. So at that point, um, a decision will be made on which direction to go there and update the board further at that point. Updates on paving and bridge, the bridge project, um, being undertaken by Mass D O T. Mass D O T notified the town last week that starting Wednesday, June ninth, they will be detouring traffic around the area in the evening starting at seven P M, P M until five A M in order to get the temporary traffic signals and barriers set up for one lane traffic pattern. The one lane traffic pattern will be up and running on June tenth. Electric Ave will be paved on the evening of June eighth, beginning at seven P M. Whalen Road will be paved during the day, starting in the morning on Thursday, June tenth. So DPW asks that you please seek alternate routes during these times.
So they should be paving Electric Ave as we speak, is what you're saying?
Yes.
All right.
The right turn lane into Lunenburg Crossing on Route two A westbound. The police chief has been in contact with Mast D O T about the right lane, uh, turn at Walmart. And according to Mast D O T, that although there is a sign that the right lane must turn right at the top of the hill on Route two, two-way westbound approach, the intersection and the signal is designed as such that the outside lane is a shared through right turn lane. Mast D O T has agreed to evaluate the traffic volumes and operations at the intersection to determine if the outside lane on the westbound approach, that the signal can be modified with signs and striping to an exclusive right turn lane. They will follow up with their findings on completion.
Can I ask a question before you go through the department updates? For the, uh, for the invitation for bids, is it, is it possible, and I'm not, I don't know, I don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking the question. One of the things that came up the last time we were talking about raising bag costs, I, I know I voted against it because I believe I was concerned about the impact to seniors and wanting to have some kind of system by which uh, senior members could, could purchase, you know, a limited amount per month at a, at a discounted amount. Is it, is it possible that, I, I mean, I was told that bags can be ordered online. Is that still true?
They, there is a limited, um, basically they, that program was for homebound people, um, that during the pandemic.
Okay. Is it possible to build off of that same program? Um, and have something so that, such that seniors can purchase, um, the bags maybe at a, you know, ten percent, fifty percent discount uh, and only be able to purchase a limited amount per month online? Is that something that can be worked through so that way we're not past, or, or at the same rate that it currently is? But I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way that we can get it so that way it's one venue for, for seniors to use? Uh, that way you can control the quantity, but that results in a discount.
I'm not sure how we would approach that because it's all, um, this is through the enterprise account. I'm not sure how we would designate that without, um, I don't see how we could control the number of bags and the overall revenue that's needed to support the program.
I, al- alternatively, I guess, I, I wonder if there's a way for other people to purchase their bags online, maybe as like a, a constant venue and to have an option of, you know, donating money so that way, um, those who are senior populations can receive that discount. I, I guess I'm trying to find if there's a creative solution here.
Yeah, I would have to give it more thought.
Yeah, I think it would be another tender item that we, because I don't think anybody has thought about this. So. Let's take that time and if anybody has a workable plan, or if there's any model for such a plan that you through your channels, Madam Town Manager, or the other town administrators and town managers, you know, may have or may, may have done. But I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna be able to answer the question tonight.
Thank you.
Department updates. The library hours are back to normal for browsing and entering the library, which is Monday through Thursday, ten to eight, Saturday, ten to two, with curbside pickup available if requested. The carpet project will begin the week of August ninth and the library will close for those couple of weeks until that project is complete. The summer reading program is kicking off on June twenty-fourth, six thirty to seven thirty P M with a family event, which, um, the event is called Flying High Dogs and it will be held on the lawn behind the library. And the library had a high response rate for their survey that they sent out for their long-term strategic plan. And the recommended plan will be voted on by the Library Board of Trustees at their June meeting. Updates from the treasure collector. The collector's office is getting preliminary billing ready and preparing for the auditors. Uh, auditors are actually here this week. The finance director issued notice, a notice to departments that all final purchase orders and requisitions for fiscal twenty-one must be opened by June tenth and that departments need to submit requests for encumbrances by July fifteenth. The finance director has also been very busy reconciling the changes made by the federal and state government related to what is eligible to be submitted to FEMA and under the CARES relief money as this has changed multiple times and that needs to be readjusted in, in our accounting system. Also, she submits quarterly spending reports for the CARES funding with the latest that was due on June fourth. From the land use director, North End Subaru is leveling their dealership and building a new expanded footprint that will increase their service area. The planning board has a subdivision plan before them for one oh one Pleasant Street for a six slot subdivision consisting of six duplex buildings. The applicant requested a waiver from the maximum dead end road length of six hundred and fifty feet, which the board denied. As a result, the applicant redesigned subdivision proposal by reducing it to four duplex buildings. The continuation of this hearing is scheduled for June twenty-eighth. The planning board also has a hearing for the construction of four two-unit townhouse buildings consisting of six three-bedroom and two two-bedroom units at seven eleven Massachusetts Avenue. The continuation of this hearing is scheduled for June twenty-eighth as well. From the council and aging director, the drive-through events will end in June. There'll be a summer cookout for the seniors that is sponsored by the Police and Fire Departments and the Eagle House Supporters on Friday, June twenty-fifth at noon. The senior center will have a summer lawn chair concerts on July twenty-third at one P M and August twenty-seventh at one P M. There are a number of other programs at the senior center that can be found on their monthly newsletter, on the website and advertised on their Facebook page. From the assessors, motor vehicle excise tax bills in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand went out in May. The new assessing software conversion is complete and Vision will go live on July first. Billing will be done from Vision. The G I S mapping through Cardographics will be updated regularly and those field cards will be. The GIS mapping through Cardographics will be updated regularly and those field cards will be updated accordingly as well. From the DPW, the DPW Director reported that the DPW is performing all the landscaping and mowing until the new contractor begins on July first. The Town Beach will be opening on June twentieth and Lakeview Nursery will be coming in to do cleanup at the beach. The Recreation Director is currently out on maternity leave, so the DPW Director and the Administrative Assistant are handling all Town Beach-related responsibilities while the Recreation Director is out. There's been an increase in purchase of rain barrels and compost bins since the annual town meeting where samples were displayed. The Flat Hill Culvert Project will go out to bid shortly in July to begin in the new fiscal year when funding becomes available. From the Police Department, there has been an uptick in arrests that appears to be a residual impact of isolationism from the pandemic. The department completed the training on the body-worn cameras and they were deployed on Friday, June fourth. From the Fire Department, two of the full-time firefighter EMTs will be finishing their paramedic tests soon. And once they receive their paramedic certifications, the chief can apply to the state to run at the paramedic level. In other meetings, events, and announcements, the Lunenburg Farmers Market on the Ritter Lawn will, will begin Sunday, starting June thirteenth until October tenth at, and the times are ten A M till twelve thirty P M, except Sunday, July fourth, where there will be no farmer's market. The summer band concerts will resume on Monday evenings at seven P M, starting July twelfth until August ninth with a added rain date of an additional Monday on August sixteenth. Concerts will be moved to the area in front of the TCP Building where the band will set up on the, the stairs at the TCP entrance and visitors can um, set up their chairs and sit on the, the grassy area right across the, the front entrance. That triangle will be blocked off uh, for traffic and the gate will be closed on Memorial Drive for a safety reason. So there'll be plenty of parking at the library, around the TCP Building, and there will, will be designated spots that will be closer to that area as well for um, anyone um, handicap that can park there.
Excellent. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I, I have a question on the uh, Committee Department Updates, uh, comment question. Uh, thank you for the work on the culvert uh, for meeting with the residents that are concerned and uh, for, for continuing to add these updates uh, to the week, to the weekly uh, Town Manager's Report. For the, for the police update, i- i- the uptick in arrests that appear to be residual impact of isolationism from the pandemic, is that a nice way of saying domestics, domestic violence?
That's one of the categories, yes.
Any other questions for the Town Manager on the report?
Yes, I have one other thing I wanted to add that I uh, forgot to include. Um, I met with, and you reminded me of it when you mentioned the North Cemetery Garage. I met with um, one of the teachers from Monty Tech last week, the Ritter Building, to see if the Ritter Kitchen Project could be a project that Monty Tech could do. And it is, so it's um, they'll be, they would be doing that sometime in the fall. And um, that will save the town's money on um, what it potentially could cost for prevailing wage and labor costs, so we'll.
Nice. Thank you. That's excellent. And it gives them a, a, a unique educational experience, so that's awesome.
Good all-around.
Uh, I did want to report to the board about our appointees. And there was a question about the, the ADA, the American Disabilities Committee. So we have reached out and Ms. Adams would like to continue to complete her term so that everybody is aware of that. So that ends uh, the, one more remaining year. I think her current time expires in twenty twenty-two. Okay, upcoming meetings. So we have a goals workshop next week, so come chock full with the goals, or maybe not chock full, maybe just a handful that we can discuss in depth instead of a chock full that we can discuss superficially. I'd rather the form of the letter. Uh, but we wanted to get them done as soon as possible, so we hit the fiscal year running, starting July first. And we have the summer to do, you know, make progress on a lot of these. Whatever our goals are, one, two, or three, we don't want to go beyond that, but that we can make real progress. And then, of course, we have our, back to our normal schedule. So our next week will be in person. And our last meeting of the month will be June twenty-second. Now at Town Hall again, unless, until further notice. Any public comment from the public this evening? Seeing none. Any public comment from the board this evening? Also seeing none. So I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Franco?
To adjourn the meeting.
Hold a second. Alright, I don't know that there would be a reason to discuss adjournment, so let's just go for a vote. Uh, Mr. Franco?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
And I for myself. Uh, I look forward to seeing everybody uh, on, who's involved in the meeting in person next week. That would be a welcome uh, change. And until then, everybody out there, uh, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. See you next week.
You as well, alright, alright.